Can you hear me? Can anybody hear me? Can you hear me? Hello, hello? Hello, hello? Testing, testing, one, two, three. One, two, three, four, five.
I I can hear you.
I can hear you. That's great. Awesome.
This is Greg. I can hear you.
We can hear everybody online. But we can't hear anybody there at the council chambers. All right. Thanks, Evan. Thanks, Greg. Dana, they're having issues. Obviously, oh, here we go. We're going away. Oh, we hear you.
Yeah. Okay, let's try that. Did anyone hear us now?
We can hear you. We can hear you.
Can you hear us now, Max?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. So it sounds like you can hear us, but we can't hear him. So now. Uh, you're fine, seven year.
Okay, you can hear us, Max?
Yeah.
I don't think, speak up. I don't know if we're hearing you.
No.
Hello, could you hear me?
Oh, it's it's muted.
Click it again. Yeah, and then click anywhere on the bar. Yeah, that's all.
Everyone, Dave, can you hear us?
We can hear you.
Shall we try that again?
Well, we can try again. I I'd need to make sure that we could hear them.
Max, can you speak?
We can hear you.
You think after three years we wouldn't be having this problem?
Um, you can set them to the TV. Um.
But you can't hear us as well, you said?
Here.
Dana Green, can you hear me?
There we go.
I can hear you.
So whatever, Matt, whenever you just.
Okay. I, Max and Dana, we just heard you. Can you hear us at this point?
Yes.
Affirmative.
All right.
So for future reference, it was under that microphone to turn up that line bar.
Uh. That's it. It was fine. I don't know what the problem was. You just kind of mess around yourself and it eventually was.
But IT professional at work.
It's usually done with a minute.
Uh, would you finish? Roll call, please.
Yeah, okay. Um, for Gen Z.
Present.
Councilmember Green.
Here.
Uh, that's not here, and that's not a good citizen, so.
Thank you. Next up, we have the approval of the agenda. Is there anything that we'd like to change on this agenda?
I think the only addition we caught already and our Deputy City clerk sent out an updated agenda that just indicates that we will have a proclamation about our intention.
Any other thoughts or changes? Are we entertain a motion, please?
Luna, let in seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. At this time, uh, do we have any housekeeping matters?
Um, I have one.
Please quickly.
Um, the parking, the wave of paint. Um, like Western Hardware and then the community bank supply.
Right.
Uh, we, are we taking some steps to uh, get some signage for those and?
We already own the signage. We have to give it in place. And, uh, you know, I we've talked to the street department about that. They're aware of it. So yes.
What about making those more approachable and cuddle?
The same is true for both pages. We have discussed with the street department some steps to improve both those laws. Probably road mill at this point, which is grading the road mill uh, to make them, as you say, a a little more, uh, stable and able to able to market.
Okay, and that's gonna happen in a month?
So I would, I would hope so. It's it's almost June. Yeah, it's the end of June. It needs to happen.
Okay.
Before June.
Thanks for that.
Max, yes, please.
And, uh, regarding Councilmember Hill's comment beyond just the surface of these parking areas, what about lighting? So it doesn't look like we're gonna have somebody go in there and be mugged behind the table upper house. I think there's one light dangling from a pole back there.
Well, with there are no plans for lighting at this point. So, uh, that's something if you'd like to speak with Lori offline on that and see if that's something we have the ability to make happen this year, uh, that would be the proper approach.
Okay, yeah, I think that, uh, if we're gonna be doing any improvements beyond just the actual surface, we should also think about making it so it's a little bit more secure for folks that are parking there during the evening hours. Thank you.
Okay. You bet. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, at this time, we would like to hear, uh, from anybody in the public who would like to speak to city council. Uh, come up, introduce yourself, give us your address, you have three minutes.
Okay, it's right at twelve. Um. This is from a book of science fiction stories, particularly a lot of them. And I read this, part of this before, um, the historic preservation committee. Law can be approached in many ways, he thought, as pure philosophy, as political theory, as a history of moral ideas, as a social system, or as a set of rules. But however it was viewed, however studied, no matter what the emphasis, it had one basic function. The providing of a framework that would solve all social problems. Law was no static thing. It must and did evolve. No matter how laggard it might be, still it followed in the footsteps of the society it served. Now, um, presently, you get a subscription to the Denver Post. It's eighteen hundred and seventy-two dollars for a year's subscription. It's well beyond my means. And, uh, I'm not, I I'm not, I I can't seem to be able to read the, what's available at the library or at the coffeehouse every day. But Judge Promises in the Supreme Court of the United States was in the, uh, news again. As sometime, I guess it was last week. Um, the estimation of his previous, uh, the missteps about the um, state, something stating about how he liked the Walmart parking lots and in the beach and things like that. And he was taking these, uh, with term ended up being a collection of multimillion dollar trips, um, over a period of years. And then it found that this article added via new thing that, um, he had, uh, some hundred thousand dollar transaction with, uh, one of these people, and that was his benefactors on these trips. Now, the Supreme Court Judge of the United States has problems with this. I really don't see how, uh, the council members, uh, assuring Trace, the council member, Barnes, that it's okay that she violates, uh, the, uh, uh, provisions of not, uh, creating public and proprietary or several of the others should react publicly and proprietary. Um, I guess that's all I can say at this time, my my time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Press Bush. Anybody else in chambers who'd like to speak to city council and not outside of the agenda? Is there anybody on Zoom who'd like to speak to city council? Okay, thank you all very much. At this time, we have the approval of the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes. Anything that, uh, Eva would like to see changed?
Luna, let moves to approve the consent agenda.
In seconds. Uh, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. This time, we have the city administrators report.
Right, um, thank you, Eric. The first thing I wanted to talk about is, uh, the vacancy that we have for council member for Gen Z seats. Uh, I want to thank the mayor for getting the ad in the newspaper indicating that we do have that vacancy and that letters of interest are due to me by May nineteenth. And that I will be putting on the agenda a decision for the June sixth meeting. And at this point, we have received one letter of interest already. Uh, but if there are other members of the public who you know may be interested, uh, we will also, uh, I'll make a note to get that on the website as well.
And that's her word, too.
Yes.
It's word three.
Oh, word three, uh.
It's word three.
Okay. Oh, that's right. I was getting confused because our prior vacancy was.
It's probably not confused because you looked at that back.
Like I said. That's, uh, letter by May nineteenth and a decision that the June sixth city council meeting. Uh, just one other update, um, internally at city hall, we have, when working on our cybersecurity measures and, uh, I'm happy to say we're making progress. We still have plenty to do. Um, but we are implementing two factor authentication and we are ruling out, uh, if any of the employees happen to be listening to the city council meeting, we're rolling out phishing testing. I'm not gonna tell you exactly when, uh, but that is, uh, to test to see who clicks on suspicious emails and get training to the folks who, uh, are not uh, are working on emails that potentially are suspicious. So we'll be rolling out some phishing testing and then some, uh, basically testing in people's, um, knowledge of safe safe practices and then implementing training based upon that feedback. Uh, from the streets department, it's a little update. Um, I call it hot hole patching season, but hot hole patching season has started. Uh, the street department received cold patch, uh, beginning of last week, so they started matching hot holes yesterday. So you see that that looks a little less, um, dimpled around town. And and just so everybody knows, the 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 plan is to start at the north and south ends of town and to try and meet in the middle. So just because you your hot hole didn't get fixed immediately doesn't mean it's not going to get fixed. Um, street sweeping has started as of today. You might notice that. Uh, I noticed that as well. That is our new street sweeper that is being put into action and apparently it's working great. Uh, a couple other things. So, uh, illness has really hit city hall pretty hard. Uh, we have had a lot of people out for extended periods of time. And unfortunately, this is going to affect the date of the town hall for our police chief. So I, our one person on that has been our new administrative system, Michelle. She is very ill, um, but she's thankfully doing better. But she has been out pretty much all last week and I do not think she will return. I do, I do not know at this point when she'll be able to return to work. So given that, um, I, we're we're talking, Lori Ty is is stepping in to help out. We're talking to Frank about some new dates. Um, but I don't have a new date just yet. The date we're holding matches up. So I will let you know as soon as I can, if not. Uh, let's see, I'm gonna turn it over to the, um, police chief and then he'll turn it back over to me, um, for one last report. But there was a comment at the last meeting of a concern about some offensive speech that was written on a vehicle that was around, you know, driving around town. And so the chief did look into that issue and I just wanted to have him give a quick update on what he thought.
Good man, your honor, city council members. Yes, based upon the statement last week council meeting regarding that of a potential hate speech on the vehicle, I did locate the vehicle. The word that's inscribed on that vehicle is tyranny, not tranny. If you look at it real fast, you might think that. So tyranny is not hate speech. It's the opinion of that person, that driver. But there's nothing on that vehicle that depicts any kind of hate speech of anyone that we could say. So basically, make sure we get that clear, though.
I have to tell you, I thought, I thought it said tranny, too. That's you know, that was the first.
Yeah. So the, uh, Aaron T. sent me a photo of it and it he is.
Thank you.
Had it not been the case that it said that, are there any steps that could have been legally taken that you know? I know it's a very difficult question, but.
It would start with contact with the individual to try to establish what they're trying to do.
Hmm.
There's a fine line between free speech and hate speech and illegal speech. Uh, the best example is killing fire in the middle of a crowded movie theater. So that would be the first step is to contact that individual and try to ascertain what the message they're trying to portray. And with the understanding, opposite side of that and see if they can maybe change, change their message to something that's more acceptable or nothing as inflammatory.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. And, um, then the last few are items I have on my city administration report and I have verified this factually with a very, very good source. I have a good source that the mayor's birthday is tomorrow.
That's not true.
Then I think that we have to also get some documents that you want.
Well, no, no, that's not the issue. We, we did a proclamation at city council, uh, saying that I would no longer have birthdays. So, uh, we took care of that.
Stop, say. So, happy birthday.
That's really rotten.
Now that we have someone who I know has access to all the personnel. So anyway, from us, happy birthday.
Thank you very much. Unbirthday.
Unbirthday.
And after fifty years, it's not what it was anymore.
Uh, any questions for city administrator? Max, Dana, anything? Okay. I just, I want to make sure you guys could hear me, though. Please confirm that Max and Dana, that you can hear me.
Mayor, I can hear you.
Got you. Thanks.
And I can hear you. No question.
I feel way better. Okay, at this time, we have, um, a proclamation and I will read. This is the city of Leadville, Colorado proclamation. This is a proclamation proclaiming May as well by preparedness month for the city of Leadville and it in Lake County, Colorado. Whereas twenty of Colorado's largest wildfires have occurred within the last twenty years. And four out of the five largest fires in state history have occurred in the last three years, including the most destructive fire in state history within the last two years. And whereas warmer temperatures, drought, and continued development in the wildland urban interface have made wildfire mitigation, have made wildfire mitigation a top priority for the city of Leadville and Lake County. And whereas the wildfire preparedness month is focused on encouraging residents to learn about wildfire safety and take steps to reduce wildfire risk in and around their homes. And whereas these actions will lead to unified and fire-adapted communities throughout the city of Leadville and Lake County. Now, therefore be it proclaimed by the city of Leadville, Colorado as follows, that May twenty twenty-three is declared wildfire preparedness month in the city of Leadville and that the proclamation is necessary for the safety, welfare, and resilience of residents of the city of Leadville and the county of Lead, state of Colorado. We should, but this has been your, uh, uh, is very important to you and something you've really focused on. Would you want to make any comments about it?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. Just, uh, I guess, uh, thank you for the recognition. Um, I know council member, Regent Z, um, is probably a, uh, also very important to him and hopefully the rest of us, but, uh, just a quick overview, I guess, of the success that we've had in, um, working with our partners, uh, in the Arkansas Basin Roundtable with the Colorado State Forest Service, US Forest Service, um, Arkansas River Watership Collaborative. Those are all folks who are really working um, on the county's part to seek out the available funding and have, um, helped us uh, been successful in the award of a lot of that funding over about four million dollars, um, maybe five million now. Um, it's really exciting. You know, it's, it's a, you know, tens of millions of dollars to get, uh, to make a dent over the next ten years. Um, that really, uh, would protect our community, um, our wildland urban areas, which is very large part of the county, not just those areas of approximately surrounding the city, um, but also those areas of of other residential neighborhoods and, uh, important infrastructure, um, like water, recreation assets, et cetera. So thanks for joining us in that and, um, we've had a lot of success and hope to have a lot more. And we'll continue those efforts this, this year and have plans over the next five um, for on the ground field agreement.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, at this time, we have a presentation from Dr. Zorliver and the advocates of Lake County regarding permanent supportive housing. You're up.
Hello, welcome members. Uh, my name is Jenny Abbott. I am the executive director of the Advocates of Lake County. Um, for those of you who have, um, yeah, met, hello. And I am here tonight with Dr. Zorlinger to talk about the advocate's interest in her clinic building at seven thirty-five Eros Highway twenty-four. Quick intro, how we got here. So the Advocates of Lake County has been doing, um, community-based anti-violence work with survivors of domestic violence and sexual violence primarily for the last forty years. This is our fortieth anniversary. And in that time, we have focused a lot of our efforts on permanent supportive housing, or excuse me, permanent housing options and emergency sheltering options and have become quite experienced over that time. Uh, while that, our friends and colleagues over at the County Village Generation, they had a housing coalition to look at the housing crisis in Lake County. And as part of that, they began to look at our problem with homelessness in Lake County. I know it's very surprising to, um, present that word here tonight. And I just want to quickly mention that homelessness is not always unsheltered homelessness. In more urban areas, um, we're used to seeing a lot of individuals who are experiencing unsheltered homelessness. In Lake County, we see a lot of sheltered homelessness as well, and that, um, tends to be living, um, by families to a single trailer or to be living in a tent um, and and moving around as you can. These are also very unsafe living conditions. And I just wanted to mention that as a baseline as we continue the conversation that we're talking both about unsheltered homelessness and sheltered homelessness. Um, when the generation and all the partners around the table looking at the homeless situation, um, realize that there is a need for some intervention and that there are federal dollars available for such interventions, uh, the Advocates of Lake County Board recognized that as we are the most experienced service providers in housing in the community, uh, it would be not too difficult for us to expand our service base and begin serving other populations in need. And they went ahead and changed our mission statement slightly so we can do that work. We are actively pursuing funding opportunities um, to work with this other subpopulation. And one of those funding opportunities is for permanent supportive housing units. Permanent supportive housing is a housing-first, um, approach in which you get individuals who are chronically homeless and permanently disabled into a, into permanent housing and then provide supportive services. Um, it's a little backwards from the way we do things now, which is that the community partners who do social service work here in Lake County. So I'm including the advocates, well, charitable, the church, the faith-based community, um, county social services. We scramble when we, when someone is experiencing homelessness and we try to, we spend a great deal of time and energy trying to get that person into a safe location. And only then do we spend time and energy working with them on the supportive services they need, whether that be, um, some addiction counseling, some behavioral health intervention, um, food security. And so the idea of this is let's put a roof over their heads first, stop scrambling, and then we can coordinate our services and be much more efficient. This is very appealing to the service providers in Lake County, uh, who've sat around the table and talked about this for the last year. So there's a great deal of support and the question now is just where and who's gonna pay for it? Who's gonna pay for it is, um, a combination, as many of these big projects are, but largely from DOLA, from the Division of Housing within DOLA. They are very excited that we are pursuing this up in Lake County, um, and very anxious to help. Um, contemporaneously, Dr. Zorlinger announced that she was looking to sell her, um, her, the, the practice, the physical infrastructure for practice. Do you want to go?
So I'm gonna start. Everybody, again. Um, uh, my, uh, take on this is that, uh, certainly in this point in my career, what I've actually did in Leadville for twenty-five years to take care of the population at large, um, I have a good understanding of what the medical needs of our community are. And there are clearly two distinct populations. One of them are people who are cared for, one of them are people who are not cared for. And unfortunately, there is a large proportion difference for that. And although I have worked hard in my career and I've just tried to take care of those folks, we've missed more completely. And now during this transition in my career, I have more time to focus, uh, really on the game of those at those populations and the advocates. And I, um, initially started talking, um, certainly my, um, personal experience of being a survivor of violence and homeless myself, um, uh, really speaks to my heart, um, about building a shelter here where folks wouldn't have to do that. Um, there are countless stories that I can tell you where the homeless population really had, um, poor outcomes. Uh, death included, when I'm only looking at my place to go, they have each other. And so this really does speak to my, um, uh, heart's racing. I would love to, um, provide the service for our community. Um, the good news, um, with good news, bad news, the current renters, um, defaulted on their lease. Um, I, they have a five-year lease, which they were unable to honor. Um, I served eviction, um, I noticed in them last month, um, I gave them six months to vacate. Um, so we have time of to put together, um, what the next phase of our plan will be. Um, my husband and I, who own the building, are also very happy, um, to provide, uh, free rent, um, to one organization, um, who would benefit from, um, uh, the building, um, until we can figure out some financial purpose. So there really isn't any time limitations when we have to, you know, have a, got that, that we have to do something. So I do believe, um, that this fits well, um, into, you know, the next phase of my career to be able to provide services for these folks and also, um, into what the county might need. Um, to be transparent, I'm also having conversations with the county, um, uh, about another option, um, uh, I have the buildings as well. And so, um, but what end goal will be to, um, uh, give the building, um, in some should reform to members of Lake County in an effort to try and, and, um, you know, put forward, uh, with other, the efforts to take care of our folks.
So that's a very short and sweet presentation of this. There's obviously a lot more to talk about and there will be other opportunities to do so soon, but we just wanted to. there will be other opportunities to do so soon, but we just wanted to get ahead of the curve and acknowledge that, yes, we are, we are actively pursuing funding that might allow us to take um advantage of Dr. Lisa's generous offer and that's where we're at.
And so the ads of this group um really have wanted something. Um if you're supportive, um uh if you believe that this is a good idea, um please support us. Um there will be letters that you can write in um uh you know, meetings to the county, the federal posts. Uh there will be a resuming request that will also be necessary. So I guess that you take um a thought for that um and just support us in our network.
Any questions? Uh do you have a question? Um when we speak about permanent supportive housing, one of the most important parts of that is that regardless of where the person is at, uh whether they've overcome all their um troubles that they're having, they continue to have access to that same housing at the same affordable rate. And regardless of their income, that's true. Are those both things that you are committed to as advocates?
Absolutely. So we are committed to following the evidence-based models um that have been established by the folks before us. And a primary tenet to that is to have low barrier of housing. So what generally meant by that um is yes, if someone has had a relapse and they can still have a roof over their head, that's certainly something that they're going to work on with their face worker the next morning. Um but we're not going to let people, especially in our climate, go unsheltered for the night while they struggle through that. And with this permanent supportive housing comes from funding for supportive services. So that's very, very important, just very the extraordinary diversion. This would come, um ALC has a clinical program going already, but we would likely bring on some addiction specialists. We would likely bring on um people who are very experienced in complex behavioral mental health issues as well to help these folks as well as physical help to some medical services.
Would any of those providers live on site or be on site every day?
On site every day. We would have, we have twenty-four-seven hotline currently. We would have a separate twenty-four-seven hotline for this. Um as an employer in this work for a long time, I would never want someone to sleep um where they're working. It's important to be able to disconnect and have some time away, but we would have coverage twenty-four-seven.
So how about managing the environment, you know, because sometimes that might be a twenty-four-seven need if you have a disparate group of of people with disparate needs, uh some with mental health needs, some with addiction needs, all living in the same proximity.
Absolutely. So we would have twenty-four-seven staff available to um the community and to individuals in the permanent supportive housing units. We would also have to have a pop-up emergency shelter component. That's not the preference. Um the preference is to get people into permanent supportive housing as quickly as possible. But we know that the model doesn't always work uh very well in the middle of the night, for instance. Um so that that would, that twenty-four-seven service will also.
Okay, Max.
Thanks, Sanders.
Huh? Max, this is.
Okay, Max, yes, please.
Yeah, uh I have a question about the 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 meeting, the agenda packet that we were sent and uh part of that was the current infrastructure within your building, Dr. Zorliver. Uh how when I look at it, uh there's a, there's a kitchen downstairs in the basement and there's a couple of bathrooms. Are you are you, are we, are we suggesting is your, is your recommendation to turn that into some sort of shelter for the ound house? Is that what I'm hearing?
That is what you're hearing. And the good thing about my building is I built it like a pull bar. Um so there are supportive posts, um but no permit walls. And so um the stance is um infinitely redesignable. Um it was also uh plumbed, um and the electrical services are for a medical office, you know, structure. And so every room has plumbing, every room has electricity. Um and so uh and and over the past, you know, twenty years that I owned the building, all of the walls have moved. Um and we have um lots of experience um designing the building what we needed to be. And I built it with that in mind, thinking that one day it would not be a medical housing.
And so so the ability for it to become, uh the one, the one piece that I noticed was there was not uh any sort of, I mean, they were all half-bath where it was just uh toilets and sinks, right? It, so we could actually put, put showers in there?
Yeah, there are, there are two um showers now. Um but yes, you could reconfigure them any way that you liked. And we would have showers in every unit as well. We would hope to put um eight permanent supportive housing, housing units in that building and then do scattered sites for the other vouchers. Um and each unit would have its own um bathing area and meal preparation area. And that's humane, but it's also has requirement uh requires.
Good. Thank you. Dana, any questions?
Uh no, I shared some of Max's questions. I I I think it's I think it's very early in the process to be asking specifics. I'm just interested to see how it develops.
Yeah, and we'll keep, we'll keep you guys in the loop as we move forward. But as Dr. Lisa said, we're really just looking for support. Our funders want to see that our community is behind this and our elected officials are doing this.
And I guess my question to that is how soon? Like, you're looking for support this meeting, next meeting?
Uh here at this stage, for support with the Amanda Patacic, who's our advancement director, sends out requests for letters of support.
Okay.
And we're working for cooperation with those first support notes.
Okay.
Um and then more to come.
I did want to add that the conversation has been had with Fire Marshal Boyle. And uh it would have to be, the residential part would have to be spread work. And I think you, you know that and that would be part of the, of the grant
Absolutely.
ask process.
Everything would be fully up to code.
Gotcha.
Um for.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? I love the vision.
Max has a question.
Oh, Max, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Um so how would this be financially supported? What's the intent behind the financial support?
So our intent of the advocates is to do as much as we possibly can without asking local government for financial assistance. Um currently, we get very, very little um from our local government and I I like to try to get the federal funding first because it's there and our community deserves it too. Um and I, I if that money were not, if that money were not available, I would never come before you would ask you to fund the whole thing. Uh it may come a time when we're asking for some in-time donations of inspection fees or or something like that. But certainly the goal would be uh to proceed without government financial assistance, um local, local government, thank you. Uh as as long as far as we can.
So you think of HUD and DOLA's uh housing division?
Correct. So HUD and donation dollars invested in this, um housing first. As I said, it's an evidence-based model and there are a lot of supporters. And those supporters, some of them are in donations. So we're also working with them.
So was there the possibility of ongoing support for operations well past the development of the building itself?
Correct, correct. Perhaps, um but to that, I would hope to keep at the level where we do now. We ask for small amounts of operational support. And in other communities, local government does support these projects. But those tend to be, they tend to have larger budgets to begin, which is why I really want to say.
All right. Thank you. Any more questions?
Do you have a comment? Uh this is the first um real evidence-based approach um towards helping the homeless uh population here in Lake County, quite honestly, period, um that is moving towards actually using a building and getting those people uh housed, uh which is obviously the first and foremost biggest issue that they face. Um so I think that this is a very valuable time for us to kind of put our weight behind this, uh something that I've worked with you all at the House, uh Homelessness Coalition uh plenty and have uh understand the in and outs alongside uh the other agencies like Full Circle, obviously I've worked with them and uh I have full confidence that uh in one way or another, this will be a relatively successful project. And I would love to see this project happen, at least personally, and would love to support it at a personal level.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. At this time, we have the Main Street quarterly presentation. Ms. Bailey.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. Mayor and City Councilmembers. Hannah's going to bring up the presentation. And I I will go um page by page, but I did want to continue my commitment to you all um that we will um provide permanent program updates so that you guys know what we're up to and that you have made a good investment in the Lower Main Street program. Um so first, I just want to say thank you for your continued fortitude and faith in our program. Uh this quarter or in the first quarter of this year, we successfully transitioned on the program. It wasn't easy. And it took all of us, pretty much all of us in the room to to make that happen quickly and effortlessly. Um and and we're happy to say that we found um a home and we're thriving. So in quarter one, we have um a couple of highlights. Um if you want to go to Katie Lee Lee. There you go. Um we created our first in many years, a meaningful multi-year strategic plan in the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. Um again, in addition to that, we worked with DOLA and a Colorado Main Street consultant to make that happen along with um an annual work plan. Um so we're really excited. This has been a couple of years that we've been prepping for this moment. So we have successfully done that. Um and we also modernized our our mission improvement statement. It hadn't been done in about six years. And about every five years, it's good for a nonprofit to kind of, you know, take a, take a look at that. And so our new refreshed uh mission statement is great living and community connection through historic preservation, beautification, and activation of public spaces to support the thriving downtown at two thousand two hundred feet. Um and let's see. Um and we also continue our support uh in the uh Heartlet Project and that's going along nicely. Lori and the mayor, we have weekly calls and I feel like things are going along nicely now and we're looking forward to a uh toilet toilet paper fitting ceremony sometime in summer. Um and us, and and we're talking financially too, and our, and our communication engagement is up and we're still um communicating and doing all those sets. And the only thing on the lead of you is quarter two is um excited, we're excited to announce Leadville Loop has been launched. That is our planner box program where businesses, organizations, municipalities um can purchase a kind of box. We can carry for it all summer. We'll have a logo and preferred placement. I'll work with you on that. Um and uh celebrating Main Streets is also in the month of May. And that is put on by DOLA and it is a statewide celebration of historic preservation in in our state. And so there is a survey that I've emailed out and I'll continue to push that out through the month of May. If you can please pick your favorite spaces on Main Street and they will put together a story map like they did last year. And it's excellent advertising and it's a way for us to to really showcase our historic gems on Main Street. And one last announcement is community cleanup is uh scheduled for June end. We love everybody there. Um this is not just a Main Street effort. This is in partnership with uh um C four, Curs and County, Lake County, the city, and Conservation District. So um we'd love to see everybody there. Unless anybody has any questions, that's it for me.
Anybody have any questions for Nancy or the Main Street member? I have one. Um I know we've been talking about it for some time, but is is the state Main Street program uh onboard to bring our our program to the next level?
Yeah, they are. They are absolutely. Um I think we needed to get through our first quarter transition. Set us behind about a quarter or two, if you will. So I, my intention is to have that innovation in their program. I'm anybody in this this whole year.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, we have a presentation for the Leadville Racers.
Hello, everyone. Awesome. Thank you, Lori. You are a rock star. You're a rock star. Awesome. I thought one of the things when I talked about was perhaps over the time that was nice, since we know that last year we kind of got as weeds a bit. Um knowing that we're fairly familiar with all of these, I will highlight a couple of points and that their direct questions, take those and make sure that they kind of hit the big points to start with. I wanted to give us a few visuals and playlists. So this is the marathon to start at the beginning of the summer. Um first of all, we appreciate all the support of the city in all these different facets to bring this together from city streets, city police, all of our city council members, all the different communities who show up to support this, and we cannot do it without everybody at the table. And a few conversations to kick it off and make sure we're somewhat missing ballpark between um we're able to sit with the police chief and with Tony, the city streets, and also with um Lori and just sort of go through a few pieces, but I know there'll be some questions left over. So this is Marathon. Nothing has changed here. This will be the same, the request. The way that I wrote everything out, I hope is a little bit clearer. I went back and refined it even further, was careful at one time. Closures of streets, some of the issues that we hit last year um were around when we got the signage up to let people know that we were going to close streets down. So the request stands exactly the same for Expo for this season for start and finish, for everything with the marathon related. Um what you're looking at is one thirty-five E-six. It's our expo lot. It's where the race starts and ends. It is where the closure is, is from the alleyway forward. The request is for the closure in the same place, basically the whole street. That section of Sixth Street, E-six, between the alley and Poplar. Nothing has changed there. We added in, per request from city council last year, we added in Porta Johns going up at Fifth and and Friar and then up on on County Road One as well. We'll continue with that. I put it in the next slide that you want to bump down. Is there any questions on the layout? Any changes here that are concerned? There's no changes, so any concerns here?
No, but I I do have a question. Uh Fifth and Friar, it's it's actually, it's now St. Patrick's Street, but nonetheless, I know it's changed names like three times. Uh anyway, but how far up County Road One?
I'll put it at the uh intersection of two A and County Road One, which is what.
Okay, okay, that late for that.
If you go to the next slide. This just gave, I just want to put it here since it was a point of concern. Put it the layout here. We have twenty-eight. We added a few more for H and R Block Building. Um just saw that that was an issue for the starter, want to make it easier for athletes. Um so then we have three of these up. We'll go Upper Fifth and St. Patrick's. And then at the CR one and CR two A corner there, so that'll hit both the heavy hat and the marathon folks and catch them and also all those crews that hang out at that corner there. And we will have um one at the, we had two of Upper Fifth. I think one is sufficient based on what we saw last year. Um and it was actually on Fifth and not on Friar. We had one on each last year. And it didn't seem like that got utilized as much as we had hoped, but we definitely think the two A and uh County Road One are a good location. Any qu, any thoughts on that from the city council in terms of where we change that or address or add more? Okay. Any questions on Marathon? There's no other real significant points that I can think of. Is there something that I can address? Any questions that are lingering about things that they saw from last years and then? Or from the last twenty-eight years?
Well, now we start showing.
Shows will stay in place this year.
Last year, how, how do you feel that worked out, Marshall?
We got really good feedback and we will continue for sort of next same this year. Um if you go back to that very first one for a second, I think I might put it on there. Your shuttle is picking up. I didn't, but it's on the corner of Fifth and Poplar. And doing a route back up to, so they'll do shows on Friday and on Saturday, and they'll be exactly the same as they were last year. And how that worked was they took folks from rodeo grounds, high school, all those areas up to the expo area and back. We got really good feedback. People utilized them, which was my fear. I'm like, we're going to put this in place. We're going to spend a lot of money on this. And it actually worked and we actually had a lot of community use, which was great. We were going to build on that. And then we took them on race day from, got them up there and then took them out to. We were gonna build on that and then we took them on race day from, got them up there and then took them out to resurrection, turned them around and brought them back. Um, and that looked super well as well and we'll just continue to build on that. Um, yeah, so I think ultimately all good feedback. We have a couple of modifications on the one hundred mountain bike expo where that, it'll just come. Um, inside of fit or on Poplar in the middle there, but all of that seemed to go very well. Any direct, anything else I can make more specific on?
No, I, I just think that that's a. Critical component of the series. Remember to release some of those stresses. On the downtown as far as parking guys don't.
Hundred percent. And we are gonna continue. So one of the things that we started to put in every pass. Social media, websites, podcasts, or not podcasts, podcasts too actually, and then some, we did local tourism's, uh, video stents with. With Adam as well and really spoke to people and really, basically we just laid it out. There's no other option. I mean, to use the shuttle system and rodeo grounds was full, started to fill up the high school and then people moving around. And that was true of all of those events. And then we actually saw, I thought was the big one. Was as we got into mountain bike and one hundred where we have significant numbers again, um, particularly with mountain bike. And then utilizing them across the course, which was great to see. And I wondered how that would go as well, but I agree with you, council members, um. It is a critical component, particularly as we look at, um, just this impact. Seven weekends of, of summer from the race series, we know we can help to decrease that a little bit. Any other questions on marathon? I didn't put any slides in here on camps, so I'm not, I think camps are pretty relatively small. I talked with the police chief. That's the biggest issue is we ask for support. Um, on run, there's no big pieces. We do all of our shows from the race series papers out to all the locations. Um, and take, take the runners where they need to go and all of that starts and ends or begins with our shuttles from, from three one six Harrison. So there's no significant requirements from the city, um, from anyone on the run at all in terms of city, police, that area. Um, any questions on run? I'll just leave it at that on the run camp itself. All will stay the same. Nothing has changed. Night, night run, the first night, they run back from Maquing. We showed them how they run back Saturday, it's the same as first. Um, out at Maquing, run over to Twin Lakes. We, we showed them back and then on Sunday they're out, um, at Willows Gulch up to Winfield if they make it and back. So nothing has changed on that at all. Um, and then for. The, the mountain bike is the only one where we had an actual request from the city, which is. I spoke with the police chief about, um, either community service officers or somebody to help us just hold traffic at a stoplight at sixth. And Harrison on the Saturday morning rides. So that one is Thursday afternoon, one hundred and twenty people up at. Oral City doing their downhill descent thing. Friday, we do from pipeline. So everybody drives out, it's pipelines and call them on and back. And then Saturday is where we're passing leave from the race series store, three one six and go out to pipeline and back. And that, for that first fifteen minutes at seven AM, we asked for support to just hold the light or just hold so those guys can ride out safely. That's the only request that we had directed to the city for that one.
How many, how many riders is that? That's, that's, is that a camp or state cars?
That's game. Yeah, all the stage races and starting ends, either rodeo or mountain bikes. So that's, you know, probably any questions on that, but. Look at us go. Keep going. Okay, we're rocking it now. So I wanted to just throw up, um. On mountain bike to jump right into this one, I also started a conversation. We had a meeting with all of law. So we had. State Patrol, um, sheriffs, city police, our K nine unit. We had, um, SARS. Had everybody together and we met prior to a county meeting where we had everybody, the whole county together. Um, and went over this plan. And again, I wanna get with the police chief and make sure we're squared away on this, but what we're proposing and this was through talking with him. Would be on, the one thing that we did last year that was different is we had Harrison down from five AM to seven AM enclosure. Soft, soft slash hard closures, so we could put the mountain bikes riders on Harrison, but the big reason was safety. So we closed that down for two hours. And basically had a dump truck and a police car, a dump truck and a police car, seventh and fourth. We had those folks staged. We talked through this with the police chief and the city streets to talk about it. This makes sense. We need to circle back and make sure that they were in agreement at that point. Was my takeaway from that meeting. Um, but this traffic plan to accommodate that. Um, this is per talking with the chief is to actually for those two hours reroute traffic so it goes, so Poplar becomes. Um, two-way for that period of time and we'll route traffic around. This is for your light traffic. So all the humans or just the cars, whatever, light traffic will go on Poplar two-way from oh five hundred to oh seven hundred. And then if you go to the next slide now, your heavy traffic, we discussed robbing around and I wanna get with him again and just make sure we're all set with this. But this is again a discussion with him on heavy truck traffic being routed around. Um, so it would come down around by the, by the golf course and back onto twenty four on both directions. So we will have personnel, we're working with the sheriff's office, um, rangers who would actually help us with this, manage this for those two hours. As we will say, we have uniform personnel, red and blues at both ends to help manage that for the heavy traffic. To give them a route through so that they're not stuck in this traffic, but this would be the heavy traffic plan. And this would all allow us to manage that closure on Harrison again, which is really set against safety and just thinking about as we move into a time. Where we know that large gatherings can be targets and these can be concerns and also how do we keep everybody super safe? Um, that this plan would allow us those two hours to be, um, closed on Harrison and then it would open up immediately. It works really well last year. We actually had it back open, I think at seven or two AM, seven AM, which is basically right when the last criminal goes out. Pulling gate off and making sure it was open and there's not a huge amount of traffic. So that'd be the traffic plan. And then the next. And let me stop there. Questions on traffic plan and mountain bike?
Yes.
The fact that you're going all the way down Mountain View and all the way to, you know, County Road Five. And then back out three hundred to highway twenty-four, that seems the least problematic route, although it's much longer than we've had in the past.
Uh, I'll let Greg go.
What's that?
I'll let councilman Greg go.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Um, I had a question regarding East Sixth Street. From the expo on Friday till the start, I believe on Saturday. It seemed last year, uh, I had residents report to me that that was closed longer than it was announced that it was gonna be closed.
I'm not sure, but, but, but what we have done, I'm not sure if it was closed longer than it was announced, but I think part of what happened that I think is critical issue is when we had the signage up. So we've already got actually announcements getting ready to go out and start to be in the Herald and be in different places from the Lacyry side. But in terms of, I really, uh, worked with Tony and we sat down and we'll get back together and we'll get this again. So the signage goes up to address, I think, your issue. To make sure and we're setting it up early, so it will be, that signage will go up on E Sixth Street, uh, Wednesday at noon. For closure, or no, it will go up Tuesday at noon for closure on Wednesday so we can set up. Because on the mountain bike, remember expo's Thursday, Friday, it's two days this, these last bunch of years. So we'll be setting up on Thursday. We will let people know on Tuesday that it will be closed on Wednesday so that they're prepared. And that's, I think maybe could have been part of the miss and maybe you heard something different. I wanna make sure I understand it. But I feel like where we had a miss or miscommunication was in when that signage got put up to announce to folks. And I plan to personally show up there and talk to those residents myself on Tuesday as well and just remind them.
But there's only one resident between the alley and Poplar. One.
And I talked to Mose, like I talked to the guy who owns Mose and he was okay, so.
It, it, correct. And, and the residents that I heard from are up a little bit further and that it was closed. So I'm just putting it out there because that's what I'm supposed to do as city council, just to be aware that that was an issue. And maybe, uh, preemptively plan out for that, for those residents who do live above, uh, above the. What's high country glass? I don't think it's high country glass anymore, but whatever that is above that.
So you're thinking, I wonder if you're thinking, and maybe this is what we can do is get the city streets and think about putting signage. Above that one sign up there that just announces reminder, this, to give them that the, the section of the closing below. In that section of E six at the alley to Poplar.
Correct. So is there a detour during that time?
They can go through the alley, make sure the alley's open so they can go.
No, I understand that, but, but does the street department have a detour marked?
No, we could definitely make sure of that.
It's worth, it's worth checking on. Is it detour? It seems to be a non-issue, but, uh.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
I forgot my question.
It'll come to you. Any other questions? Uh, this time we're talking about the, the, the hundred mile mountain bike, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, um, that it seems like for the most part there aren't really any major changes. Right?
The only thing I make sure of is that on your picture this year, you show alcohol in the street. And we're actually gonna get permits. We're gonna get permits for both the court lawn. It should have been presented to you for the court lawn and for the street. So that would be through the county and through you both. And then we'll just, like, we're still working on that layout to try to determine. We had some issues with sound conflicting. From the stage and not giving, I think, the performers the best option that they could have. But we made sure it was on there this year, so we had a, a good working document up there. And essentially this just shows, um. Your, all your folks and where everything is laid out. I don't think there's really anything we need to go into here, major that would be of. Help or concern. And actually, it could be the wrong slide. There's actually the slide that got submitted shows, um, cause I can't see that.
Oh, no, that's correct. Yeah, that's correct. I just can't see it.
The other one was the run. Yeah. Did you hear it was run first?
Yes.
Ah, okay. Copy.
Not many changes at all.
No, there's no changes on the mountain bike. We ran through that and I think it's all written out. We, last year we offered two options. That was what got confusing. This year we're clear on the option. Everything's well appointed. And we will work closely and we'll take into account those signage requests to make sure that the city streets, we get the nature set up too.
Any other questions about the hundred, hundred mile mountain bikers? Okay, next up.
Run, I think that we're gonna get to all of them tonight. Run, nothing changes here either for city, city pieces. And again, with this one, we have expo is up. It's only on Friday at one thirty five E six. We have that same section closed. Everything stays the same. Race now is Saturday, Sunday. This is your layout, but nothing is changing any of that. What you will see change this year that doesn't impact the city or any request from the city. We are working closely with county, with sheriff's office and all law to really rectify Maquing. We know that over the years, this has become a hazard to get our, we can't get our emergency services in now safely. So we will be shut only in the morning and we are going to be looking at red and blues at both entrances into the dam. One will be hard closed. It's been the request of the county. We're waiting on that approval. And we will only have one-way traffic that we will govern going in and much more controlled so that we can keep everybody parked. In a similar direction so that we have a lane for EMS, but that is not impacting.
So you'll be shuttling, but will you be able, able to, we'd be allowing people to come and drop off?
Not in the morning, but in the year.
Okay.
Same place. And basically we're presenting it to the advocates like this. We have to get this right this year, you guys, cause if we don't. Then we stand and we have to change it. We have to take immediate shuttle room. So they'll have a way to get out there in the mornings. But in the afternoon, they'll still be able to go out. They'll still be able to go and get out and meet their friends.
How often will that shuttle run? Because you, you know as well as I do, a lot of people wanna go to Maquing. Then they wanna turn around and either go to outward bound or Twin Lakes.
Yeah.
Or, or maybe even.
We're gonna have it, we're gonna have for the high points, um, designated shuttle for Maquing. And designated shuttle for the other locations. So we're increasing the shuttle, but we also. Um, have been able to partner with CMC to take some burden off of that and they're gonna handle the Winfield piece, which is gonna be super cool. Which gives us a little bit more variance to work with our shuttle system and increase it.
When you said the Winfield piece, I didn't think you were gonna allow any shuttles in.
No, we still have to get murders out of there.
Gotcha. All right, yeah, of course.
And we gotta get them out of your spot too.
Oh, yeah. No, we've got, we've got heaters and spots and.
In fact, I'm gonna get to the schoolhouse this year. Um, are we, any questions here? Nothing has changed on the run at all.
Well, you do have eleven o'clock as, as the finish time. I was curious about that.
Eleven AM?
Yeah.
Ten AM is your cutoff. That's when the thirty hour cutoff is, but we always go an hour past on both of them. I was trying to get you started. Make sure that we put everything well. We are gonna add, so some things that are gonna happen that you're gonna see is we're gonna increase. In order for the county and the courthouse lawn, probably increase our garbage opportunities there. Locations, we're also gonna increase in the rodeo grounds. Those things don't necessarily directly impact the city, but good to know. And there's a portlets plant. Everything's the same as it was. We, so the big changes we did that were per the discussion here last year that are standard this year. We will have portlets up at the high school and the rodeo grounds as well. So we talked about adding into Sixth Street. So we did add those in. That seemed to be a good thing. We'll continue with that and we'll have some. At the rodeo grounds and at the high school and at the, one at the high school, we had one on either side, high school and middle school. So. Taking care of your crew folks that are up there, but also all those people that hang out over there. Uh, nothing else has changed for you guys. Questions, comments, concerns? Funny jokes? I can go on now?
Well, so I'm gonna point out so that we really, uh, thank you now for coming and doing this presentation so that you can ask all of your questions. This was a presentation, not an action item. So this is the chance, if you think of anything. Uh, you will see all these, the T U Ps worn in your pocket. Uh, they have a chance for a human. These will be up for a, an action item at the next city council meeting and for a vote. So, um, out of respect for the race series and their timelines, what we would really like to see is any questions about now. So it ever has time to address those. And if anything you think of, we, we really wanna get those, uh, T U Ps processed. And, and through the, you know, council, the next meeting so that you can know, uh, how you're gonna proceed. And we, we trained up the process and we're having more communication in advance, especially on the bigger permits. So that, you know, as you heard, we have the three, the three, the four, the three, the four, all meeting in advance. And then, uh, so that we, you know, the packets that they're coming to you are signed off by us. The, the city is saying that this application is good by us. And so there's no question about what, what the city, you know, our questions are all being answered essentially. From the stat side.
Thanks. I would be interested to hear, if at a couple of issues, you've reached some agreements with the county about the courthouse law. That would just be interesting to hear.
I will do my best to, it all relies on the wind permits get passed through.
All right.
That's what you mean, right?
That, that, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next up, we have a discussion. This is regarding, uh, the pay for city council and mayor. Uh, we had consensus in terms of what city council will be paid in the future. We have, however, not put that in ordinance. Uh, we will need to do that, but we should probably do that at the same time that we do. If we do something with, with the mayor salary, we do those at the same time. And, uh, we have, interestingly enough, until, uh, the middle of September, the second city council meeting in September, to get that done. However, what we've talked about is it, it's really not fair, you know, to people who were thinking about running for office to not know. You know, what the rules of engagement are. Um, so I would really like to hear from city council members. You've heard from me and, uh, Luke Finkin sent something out today. I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
To set the stage a little bit, that right now our, um, title two in our code essentially is what sets the. So it would need to be an ordinance change as the mayor indicated. You were able to, by resolution, you changed, you know, es- established salaries for the historic preservation commission and planning zoning by resolution. Uh, but the, these changes would need to be in codes, so it takes a little bit longer, right? So we need to do, um, we need to follow our processes for change our code, but that takes maybe a couple of meetings. And so just right now, the, the mayor's salary is in section two point oh four, oh three oh. And it's, um, thirty thousand dollars a year. And so the, the dollar amount is in code. So what we have to do is we could change the dollar amount in code, or we could explore the possibility of doing something like we've done with the fee schedule. Which is, we say, as referenced in the fee schedule and then going forward, you could just update the schedule. Or a, you know, a, an, an accessory document rather than code. And then the compensation for the city council is the same way. So I can't figure out exactly where it is. Um. But it's also, it is also set by. Basically by our municipal code.
Yeah, as we set the stage, we know a couple of things. Uh you know, and I've 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 shared with everybody a list of. What obligations are and then what what additional activities um the mayor, the next mayor may choose. Uh to to involve him or herself in. Um it can be a lot. And so the question is, do we want a part-time mayor? Do we want a full-time mayor? It kind of boils down to that. And then we decide, okay, what does that mean in terms of compensation? So I'd like to hear. By the time we're done with this conversation, I'd like for us to reach some sort of consensus. So we know where we are going forward. And we could have that conversation with with possible uh people who would like to run. God bless their soul.
I I think the biggest. Point of contention that I've faced, and I know Tracy has as well, is the structure of a weak mayor system and how that looks for. Uh who shares what powers? I know we've talked plenty about uh who the police department is beholden to. At the end of the day, they're beholden to the city administrator, not really to council. We. Legally do not have authority over them uh as we've discussed time and time again. Um it's just a matter of code, which is changeable, but um. I I think that the concern that I have is. I I would like to have. A- and I don't know if this works better in a weak mayor system or in a strong mayor system, but. A better ability, at least for the police department, and I think this is very relevant to this conversation, um. For city council to have a little bit more of an oversight place, given the state of policing in the United States. I think that's a very important thing if we want to have. Um community buy into our police department. Um. You know, it's a very, very uh. Touchy subject and obviously there is a lot of that can go wrong. Quite frankly, as a police officer, you have a lot of power over a human being that no other. Um person really has, including even military. So. I think it's very valuable to have those conversations as we speak about, you know, what powers we transition into, um whether it's weak or strong mayor. And additionally, you know, how the city administrator reports to city council that isn't here full-time. Uh I I think that it's important to have a supervisory role be a little bit more present. Um and if the mayor is. Part-time but not as part-time, the city council, uh I I question how. Uh their ability to supervise um. Could be as effective, right? If you're not as present to hear the issues that staff may have or. Uh quite frankly, just experience it in person, which is something that I don't think any of us as city council members but have. And are able to speak out for uh nor do we have the time. It's obviously our positions are very part-time. So I. I guess if there were ways to kind of tackle those concerns that I have, I'm fine going either way. But given that I I find it hard to see how we could tackle those in an appropriate manner, I feel like having a full-time mayor mayor role position. Regardless if it's weak or strong mayor, um is vital for our community to have that presence.
I certainly agree with that. You know, I I've come to that conclusion that whoever the next mayor is. I'd want them to care and really take ownership. Of the responsibilities that exist in the mayor's position now uh and not considered a part-time position. That's just my my opinion. So thank you for that. In terms of the the distribution of power, that that's like, that's a a separate issue.
Yes.
A- and in terms of moving to a weak mayor system, although we haven't done that officially at the ballot. We have moved to the weak mayor system in statute in our own city statute. So we we we've we've done that part. Uh but I see where you're going and and I think it's a little separate issue, but I, yeah, I get it.
Absolutely. And just maybe not full-time to flesh it out, but if there is a commitment to. At some point have these conversations regardless if the mayor position's part of full-time, then I'd be much more at ease to make that decision now.
Yeah, it makes sense. Tim, I'd like to hear your opinion.
Well, I I just, I think um. An elevated salary would broaden the pool. Um, you know, Luke made some good points in his email. I think he's echoed what Mayor Labe has said in the past. That if we wanted to attract more than. Retired old guys, the mayor, we need to. No offense, Greg.
No, no. None taken. That's right. That makes me not as old, really, really old. So.
Uh if we wanna broaden the pool, we we should. Think about. Little higher salary.
I would agree with that. I I also, I I get back to the idea that that the list of what mayors could be responsible for. Is so voluminous that it just doesn't bear a part-time presence. And to your point. Having a mayor full-time uh as oversight of the city and the ability then to report back to city council on things of any importance. It is kind of critical. So I appreciate that. Uh Max, please.
Yes, Mayor, I believe that uh mayor should be full-time. And also should had uh more compensation as it is currently. I also feel that if we can get anything out of ordinance or our code. Would make it easier to change into the future. So I I'm open to that. My question though about the mayor is is. I'm I'm just trying to think about like, I mean, I know we have a judicial, we have a judge, we have Judge Floyd. Right? We have. We have. The legislative, which is council, and executive, which is more of the city administrative, some city administrator and all the. Uh pieces that the city administrator does for the city on a day-to-day basis. The question I have about the mayor is. Where does the mayor sit? I mean, I I. And and I it's not. Specific to this conversation about compensation. And so I I don't wanna go down that rabbit hole. I. However. What is? How do if the mayor? The mayor, in my opinion, needs to. Uh be a spokesperson for the city and our our plan moving forward. It can't be. Uh someone that has their own hidden agenda. And I'm not saying anything for that. I'm just saying that they have to be aligned. With the strategic plan of the of the city moving forward. And and that they're there as. Question mark. Is it half legislative, half executive? Or are you, or is a mayor completely out of the day-to-day business? In a weak mayor and it's all on the city administrator. That's the question I have. Uh which is not necessarily pertain to uh the the remuneration of of the position.
Um I think you make great points. I would say this. At this point in our evolution, the mayor has very little power, but does have influence. Um that's the way we've evolved at this point. The mayor is a partner, day-to-day partner with the city administrator in terms of. Of citywide business. The city administrator is the final decision-maker at this point, the way we have structured. Uh that that position and the job description uh associated with it. So I I hope that helps answer the question a little bit.
Uh I think to Max's point, maybe it makes sense to kind of uh have this as a larger conversation and really dive into the weeds, maybe not at a council meeting, but at a work session. Uh cause I know I and Tracy as well shares similar concerns as to. What roles a mayor plays and honestly, what roles city administrator plays and how can we balance those all out in a uh. In a way that empowers our community the best, right? So. Um and also just to clarify, I do think it should be a full-time position and this pay should be at the very minimum fifty thousand.
Uh Max, uh you know, and one more thing, Max. Uh one of my fears, you know, is that uh uh. A mayor may come in and and be like a a single-issue person. They 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 have some sort of axe to grind. And I hope that's not true. I mean, I really would not like to see that. But the electors decide that. And so a little hard to, a little hard to get inside that.
I I get it. I see Shannon's hand is up, so I'll I'll I'd like to hear from Shannon.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon, yes, please.
Yes, and Greg, I think that you eloquently said what my concern is, is that um it uh full-time and. Dividing. Power might be too strong of a statement, but having some clear uh some clear lines of. Who's managing what in what capacity? I do appreciate, Greg, that you shared that uh the ultimate decision in our current system is with. Uh our city administrator. But. We can all see the see the writing on the wall. If someone comes in with a single issue and can't get out of that and then we're we're stuck. Uh with with that. And so I I have some concerns, but I am certainly willing to discuss that. I agree that the full-time um status in uh in being available is important.
Thanks, Shannon. I mean, to your point, you make a very good point. But I think there there was a a very, very good reason. To go to the city administrator, city manager, form of government. And the reason is, we wanted to. Um protect ourselves from who the next mayor is. You know, I mean, or or who the next four mayors are gonna be. We wanted insistency in government. And we wanted the uh we wanted there uh to be institutional knowledge as we go forward and not lose that every single time an election takes place. So um and and that's what we've done.
Absolutely. And I appreciate the the foresight that went into to getting that. Uh that was before my time and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Data.
Oh. I'm. I've been a little reluctant because I. And I do not mean any of my comments to um diminish uh the effort. Mister Mayor and the and the involvement that you've had, cause it's been amazing. But I guess my take on adopting the weak mayor. System and in hiring a city administrator. Was to spin off. Management and city day-to-day stuff to the city administrator and that the mayor would become. Kind of a uh y- you know, a person about town involved as you are for the purpose of. Keeping the council and the city informed as to what's up and where our particular. Efforts may be focused or or should be focused. And. The list that you sent out is this incredible amount of uh of of things that you personally have been involved in. Is very admirable. Um but I'm also not sure, kind of like you said, in if future mayors, if if all of them are are necessary, per se. To um to the city. So going into this, excuse me, I. I've kind of viewed the the mayor moving forward as a part-time position uh with. The corresponding lower salary. Um which I would hold where it is now, but make the position part-time. So I guess I'm gonna disagree with everything. Sorry.
Okay, not only are you allowed to disagree, we appreciate it. I I I would say this. I mean, you know, obviously you make some very good points. I don't know what the next mayor is gonna do. I just don't know. And 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 none of us really do. Um you might could resent that mayor with the list, uh but maybe I would do that before they run. Rather than after. Um it just just so they have some sense of reality. About wh- what this actually means. And in some cities, that it that's not meaningful at all. Mayors have other jobs. They're not only part-time, they're extremely part-time uh as mayor. So um. I I would hate for that to happen to us. That's all.
Can I just?
Please, Lauren.
I I just like to add, I I think however the council decides on this. We need to incentivize some of, I I think we are gonna be hard pressed. To find someone who's worked as hard as this mayor. And and I think that is my biggest concern is that uh, you know. Uh the mayor have have been in the trenches on many issues and. He, you are very lucky to have this mayor who shows up every day. There are not many cities where the mayor shows up every single day to the office to help. With whatever needs to be done. And he's absolutely right. It has been a a partnership and. Uh my invested interest is that we incentivize someone to come into this position, not as a. Figurehead or someone who thinks this is just gonna be ribbon cuttings and not put that effort into it. I I think however the council. My interest is in in someone coming in with the same level of commitment and dedication that this mayor has had. And I think. However, we need to incentivize that so that the person who is the mayor is truly a partner and is not somebody who thinks this is just a. A position of stats. I think that would be uh. I I think that would be a step backwards for the city.
Good. Follow-up questions and thoughts? Question?
Uh I guess I I was gonna wait till uh city council reports to do this, but I'll. Do it now to a light extent. Um. As someone who is or was very active in the community, it takes a. Lot of time. I worked a part-time job at JF Housing Trust, put in my letter of resignation. I will be leaving the nineteenth. Um due to personal matters and a living situation. And I have had to drop. Just about most, if not all of my uh. Outside of city council responsibilities and outside of some things at the housing coalition. I'll get more into that at the. Uh city council's report. It is quite honestly a full-time position. To be able to go to these meetings properly debrief, properly understand what's going on. And get this education that quite frankly is necessary in our council meeting reports. Feel like a lot of the time, there is that, you know, uh local. Uh understanding missing and a lot of, or there would be rather, uh you know, the mayor fills a lot of that shoe in and I feel like I fill those shoes in as well to some extent, but. Um I I worry that if we lose. Someone who is capable of going to these community meetings and which would end up being a full-time job in and of itself if we do it properly. Um would we lose that insight? Because it's unfair to rely on city council members to kind of do that work as. You know, unless it's a retired person, it's gonna be very unlikely that a council member. Um is able to go through with that. So. It's it it, we would be losing the voice of the community in a way that I feel like would be inappropriate for us to lose. I. To be honest with you, don't feel like we get enough community presence at our meetings to speak about uh the certain bills. Um that may come up or how influential that their issues may be, um or how we can help them in their issues. And we definitely need someone who's kind of. Going through those processes and going to those meetings to kind of represent the city, cause. Uh it, we are just gonna be missing too much local lived experience, local expertise. If we do not have people at those coalitions and at those meetings that. Are just vital to our community, that quite frankly are backbone to our community in a way that just don't get spoken about. So uh that's my main concern. In losing someone who could potentially fill that role.
I would say it's hard for city council members to do what you've done and what's Tim do, Tim has done. It's hard. Um and and I think we're very lucky that that both of you have been so involved in so many different. Uh aspects of of uh, you know, of the community. Um but. Without that coverage. However, we do it. You know, then then as a city, we're we're diminished. So. Tim, thoughts?
Um I gave my thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Max.
Mayor, I I I think we have to have a some more discussion.
Better. Data.
I've had my say. Thanks.
I've had my say. Thanks.
All right, Shannon?
I, I did have one question. Greg, I read your, uh, your synopsis of all the things that you do a few weeks back. Um, so pardon me if this is included. I just don't remember. About how much time during the week do you feel like on average you spend mayoring?
That's a great question. You know, I will tell you that before we, we hired a city administrator, it was probably in excess of fifty hours a week. That was just, that's the way it was for about six years. In the last year, I thought it would be much less. But on the other hand, I, I've probably taken on involvements that maybe I wasn't able to before. I would say it's thirty-five to forty at this point, to be honest. That's, that's where I think we are.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yep. Um, it sounds like, and I don't know that we have consensus, but it sounds like so far we have four city council members who think that this needs to be full-time. And that the compensation needs to probably be fifty or more. I wouldn't want it to be more than that, I have to tell you. I, I think there's a point at which you'd be asking for people to run for the wrong reasons. Um, and that's just a thought on my mind. Um, so I'd like to see if we can agree as a city council that we want to go forward um, with this as a full-time position. And that it would be um, presented as such, that whoever comes into this position understands that's, that's the deal. And that um, the fifty thousand may be a proper compensation. Do we feel like we have, Shannon has her hand up?
I, I do. And I have a thumbs up apparently too. I didn't mean to, but um,
Yes, please.
I, I've heard, um, uh, you state that, um, and, and Tim, I appreciate that, that we, we want to make sure that our pool is open. Uh, in terms of, of having candidates who, who would want to run for this position. I'm wondering if by stating it's a full-time, if we would be limiting the pool in some respects.
I, I feel contrary, honestly, if we were to state it's a part-time, you're kind of i- if we're trying to get young, involved community members in saying it's a part-time position, you are heavily limiting who you can. Uh, uh, I find it hard for us to get anyone to commit to a part-time position who may who would have that availability given our current uh, living situation. They would have to be a very fortunate person to be able to get through that.
Well, not just that, but there are meetings at eight o'clock, there are meetings at eight thirty, there are nine o'clock. There are two o'clock in the afternoon, there are four o'clock in the afternoon, there are six till nine.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, it doesn't lend itself to being able to also have a part-time job if you're going to do it to the, to that extent. Tim? What is your thought about uh, compensation full-time with fifty thousand?
I'm going to, I'm going to grant you that.
I couldn't hear that.
Uh, Tim says he, he agrees with that. Um, that this, we, we could present it as a full-time position at fifty thousand dollars. Um, okay, Max?
I can go with that, Mayor. It's a full-time position, I guess. We're going to have to see what, what the individual brings to the table and, and.
Yeah. Yeah. That's, that's the scary part. But yeah, I, I would say fifty thousand dollars, you know, uh, uh, the AMI, hundred percent AMI in Lead County is sixty-seven-six. Um, so we know that that's not the greatest of pay, but what we also know is for a family where they're going to have dual income possibly in children, that maybe that's adequate to getting a younger family-oriented demographic willing to, to do this, because for a hundred and forty-three years or whatever it's been, it's been old white guys. That's it.
So I think I, I, I would like to push back just a little bit on declaring it full-time. Um, I hear you about uh, not wanting to uh, up the salary to where you might not get someone with the, the right heart, the right spirit for running. But I also um, pushed back that fifty thousand dollars could be difficult still.
Yeah.
Um, and so I, I, I guess I would like to implore us to consider it a soft full-time thing. You know, it turns out not, it's not forty-plus hours a week at fifty thousand dollars.
Flexible.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't want to say, I, I, I tend to disagree because I think it is forty hours a week. I think that's the obligation, not eight to five, no, you know, but, but, but in terms of, there are weakened obligations that happen in this position. And, and fairly often, and they may not be on, on, you know, um, mandatory by any means, but but it's hard to be impressed.
I guess my worries along the same lines of uh, council member Greg's worries is that fifty is just not a realistic number to get through by nowadays. Um, sixty-four thousand. We'll see what happens here in the next few weeks with AMI. It's supposed to go up. It, it's median, right? Meaning you're taking same amount of people at the top as the same amount of people at the bottom. It's on average, it's median. Um, and at, at the end of the day, I feel like part of me agrees that certainly you don't want someone who's just here for a paycheck and slips out, you know, that, that situation, that type of situation sucks a lot and it puts you in a really bad bind. But um, how realistic would raising, you know, it to fifty make a change for someone who's looking towards running? I, I'm just not sure. Uh, obviously it all depends on who's running and that's something that's electorally, we have to solve as individual voters and uh, commit to, but uh, fifty is just seems like a a bit of a low number given our current uh, financial circumstances and the cost of living here in a county. And I, I would like to have more discussion about if this is a full-time position. Is that a realistic amount to pay someone? Um, yeah.
Yeah. My thought is yes, Tim.
I think we all agree it should be a full-time position, but ultimately that's up to whoever gets elected.
It kind of is, it kind of is. Uh, Dana, we. Iron? Yeah, I, I kind of feel that same way. Yeah. Yeah. Uh, Dana, we haven't, I haven't heard from you on this round.
Well, I mean, I feel like if, if we just keep escalating these salaries personally, I'd rather throw a full-time salary to a full-time communications and PR person for the city. And keep the mayor soft and friendly connected with the city, but not like we're just got Jason. So I'm going to give you a degree.
Okay. I really would like to have something to come out of this meeting with, we can have conversations with uh, two, two potential candidates. Um, if we languish too long, uh, it would not be fair to anybody who's, who's thinking about it. Or maybe somebody who's thinking of not running, because you know, they, they don't know what the pay is. So I, I, I feel like, yeah.
Yes, good question. So I, I mean, right now what we're looking at is just compensation and, and we would need to make a code change to that. And so I guess it is, is there some agreement amongst the council that the current amount in code needs to change?
Yes.
Because if that's the case, then we can start working on the ordinance and we can start working on that backend and do the work and schedule it for another council meeting where we can decide. But if you think thirty is fine, then we won't start drafting any documents with our legal.
We have agreed that the thirty's not fun. I, I think we have, we have five out of six who feel that, that and I, I'm going to, you know, put words in everybody's mouth, but that fifty would be certainly a minimum amount that we consider. Um, I, you know, agreeing with Tim, I think that, that is an amount that, that tries to tread that balance. You know, between too much and not enough. And, and getting somebody who's, who's coming into this for the right reason, wanting to do a good job, uh, that's my hope. But it's a hope.
So we at least know, we're trying to get direction. I know what the mayor's trying to do. He's trying to get direction for staff, for our next staff. So it sounds like our we should at least start working on the code change to increase the salary. And you know, it, it may, if we need to have a placeholder, we could put fifty thousand, uh, or depending on the outcome of the season, but at least we need to get that process going.
All right, Max, please.
I just want to, when we uh, hired the city administrator, we were going towards a weak mayor system, right? And so, and so uh, something that I, I don't think we should throw the, uh, the idea that Dana just brought out to us is that we have some, some opportunities to put more control with the city administrator. And have, for example, a communications director, public affairs officer in their role. And, and what is the true, like, we might have to, like, I, I, I think there could be a need to actually ask what the role is of the new mayor before we decide on a salary. I, you just said that fifty thousand dollars is a minimum. I made, I might actually disagree until I know what the mayor is actually doing. Right? And, and, and the fact that it, if, 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 if the city administrator had more, more personnel and we had more personnel that actually were paid for that, what is the true role? Is it, I mean, is it the mayor that just goes to uh, certain events? It's in a true weak mayor system, uh, then that their, their pay is uh, is not supposed to go up extraordinarily. Uh, if that's the case, I, I, I think uh, with that, that voice in the room that Dana is, I mean, I, she's kind of making me lean over to think that we have more discussions before we say amounts, the amount is.
We've discussed this for months and we need to be able to present something to the public. We need to come to some sort of a decision point, even if it's not definitive. Uh, we need to make up our minds, the direction we're going. And, and talking about studying it further won't get that done, sorry. It just, it just is not really fair to the people, the community of Leadville right now, s- some of whom are trying to make up their minds. Do I or do I not want to run for mayor? And um, that's we owe it.
Comes down, if, if money is the bottom line for the person that's running for mayor, then perhaps we have the wrong person running for the, that, that position. If that's what it is. I am not going to um, be, be, be bullied into a corner to say we have to make a decision right now, when I don't think we have a fully baked idea.
I'm saying we need to reach some sort of a decision point. It's not, it may not be a true decision. But we owe it to our, to the public, to our community, uh, to be more definitive than just say uh, we need more studies or we need more discussion.
That's fine. Then, then let's come up, the first step I have then, Mayor, is this. Is when do we need a decision to be made by? When, when is that, when is the drop dead date to have this, this, this completed? So we have it, because to be honest, this is our first opportunity to have this discussion. And so.
Not really, but uh, I would say this. When we come out of this meeting and we're talking to our constituents, we should be able to tell them something. What I would say is, is four city council members have said, we think that uh, that the mayor position probably should be full-time. And that fifty thousand dollars is kind of a minimum consideration right now. Um, and, and so that's, those are the conversations we need to be able to have. We already know the city council, what city council is going to be paid going forward. Um, and this is, this is important.
I, I wanted to answer Councilmember Fergent's question, what is the drop dead uh, time? So if you look at our code, it specifies um, that uh, I'm going to find the pay here. Um, we have to basically decide by our calculations by September. And so the you have to have it, is it? We read it this morning. Uh, uh, yes. Um, so we have to decide on, on that competition before the election and I think.
We don't have to decide on it. We actually have to have it in code by.
Yeah, we have to have it in code um, by the uh, first regular meeting before the election.
The mayors will start declaring in the next month or so. They will pick up their packets for, for signatures the first week in August.
Yeah, I was going to say, so it's section two point oh four oh two oh, it took me some time to find it. The city council shall at least as early as the last monthly meeting before such regular municipal election by ordinance fix the salaries and fees of the members of the city council with the salary of mayor.
So I think what Mayor is saying, in, in order for people to run.
Absolutely.
They need to know and want to run by August.
Okay.
Right, and that, that the councilor Fergent's expression is what is the drop dead date?
I understand that, but I'm talking to you more.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would say this, and I would suggest that we put on the agenda for the first week in June, this same topic. I think, I think we have, if not consensus, we have a majority that is moving in a certain direction. But by that, that first, the meeting of the first week in June, I would ask that everybody be ready to, to reach consensus, uh, to be able to make a decision.
Mayor, I will say one last thing before I raise my hand is at least in the quick ability, ability for me to take a look at salaries of mayor, the, the, the Denver mayor makes fifty-seven thousand dollars a year. The Boulder mayor makes less than sixty thousand dollars a year. At least that's from my quick, probably GPT, um, uh, webs, web search. I think we have to take a look and see what other municipalities with this type of system has as a salary and make a commensurate. We're just sticking numbers in the air right now.
I would say it needs to be commensurate with our, with our uh, our local economy. That's, you know, I don't, I don't care what they pay a mayor in Denver. Uh, we have to think about what is the proper number in our local economy, uh, that would be appropriate.
I, I guess my worry is also shared with uh, Councilmember Green, and uh, it sounds like Councilmember Fergent's. Is that if this mayor is going to truly not have any general oversight and I, I understand that this is a decision that has already been made by previous council, but I think that's why we have rotating councils to really assess if that's the right position or not. Um, we are currently headed and currently operate in a very similar way to a mayoral system. Um, I, I strongly feel that we just need to have those conversations before we can for sure say this is what the salary is. And this is, is I don't think there's full consensus in city council that that makes sense, that we are fully for sure going to move towards a weak mayor system. We're going to push that and make it a valid decision.
We're already in a weak mayor system. That's, that's not a question.
But I, I think that it's important to note that, you know, is that really the way that we want to continue to operate and is that are the powers that are currently being held hold in the way that we want to? I think that's a conversation we truly desperately need to have and are owed as council members. Um, that, and I know there are other council members who agree that we need at least a conversation about how is that working for us right now?
And I, I don't disagree with that, but I, I'm not sure that I can flate that with the idea of salary for the next mayor and what their responsibilities might be.
I, I guess it could hold more responsibilities depending on the will. I personally would rather it go to council, but you know, I, I don't know how those conversations are going to go. So it's kind of hard for i- if that responsibility is held to that higher standard, right? If your responsibility is now all of a sudden a, a different one, and you have a lot more of that uh, standard held to you, then maybe higher competition makes sense. If it's not fifty thousand might make sense. And if it's the complete opposite, if we're trying to fully phase it out, then thirty thousand would make sense. Like, I, I understand the points that are, you know, being made of, we seriously need to have a discussion as to like, what that really means? What are we truly getting into? And is that? And is that something that we are truly in favor of um in terms of a weak mayoral system?
That, you know, okay, I'll leave that alone. Uh, then I would like for this to be on the agenda for June the sixth, if that's okay.
One more comment, I've I've been so patient. Um, I just wanted to come back to when I was mentioning uh between full time-ish status or or soft full time. I was not in any way advocating for a higher than fifty thousand salary. I was just considering the different hours, the different meeting times, all of those things that you said. In terms of 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 mandating that it be full time. I think we we know things are busier in the summer and April and May might be a little bit slower usually. So I think we have to be careful in 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 calling it full time. Because that could end up with someone working eight to five Monday through Friday and the rest of the world be damned.
All right, it's a good point. I mean, you know, that 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 needs to be a clear understanding. This is not an eight to five position. I would also say, uh, in terms of what goes on here, there is no slow season. The the summer is not necessarily busier than than April and May. I I don't know why that is, but it is.
No, and I and I recognize that slow season might be, might be too too generous for what it is. But I, you know, we we all know that we take it an exhale when our our streets aren't uh full with skiers or with. Um, racers and and summer tourists. So thank you for listening to me.
Okay, thank you. Shannon, oh Shannon, uh, Dana, any last thoughts and we'll move on?
Uh, no, only to say that I would certainly disagree that our. Um, economic considerations are that significantly different from Boulder where prices are very high and houses are very, very tight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, if we're finished with that conversation, we will uh reinvest in this uh in June. But I would, I would uh certainly point out that that at some point, we need to make a decision and it's important. Okay, uh, next up, we have resolution number nine. This is a series of twenty twenty-three resolution approving the second amended and restated Lake County nine eleven authority intergovernmental agreement. And bylaws of Lake County Emergency Telephone Service Authority. Um, I'd like to hear from staff.
Sure, so uh, this is back before you again and uh there's sort of a couple of things to note. Uh, we do have the county here, um, Tim and Claire are here to talk about the changes. But I just wanted to note that uh the board, I I checked with Tim beforehand, the board did not vote the agreement. Uh, for the documents today, they were waiting to hear from us and Saint Vincent's. Uh, but the version that you have in front of you is the most recent version that is present, going to be presented to everyone for their approval. It's gone through legal review, uh, it's gone through all the parties and so this is, this is hopefully the final version. And um, the one thing, did I, you wanted to just highlight the changes from the last version? Don't think there's really much. There's just a few things that Claire highlighted.
Yeah, um, the only changes are going to be, um, sorry, section. Uh, it's gonna be regarding the annual payments, um, the language was flushed out a little bit. Just to talk about how that payment, it, how that payment works, um, but also if there must be a change to that process. Um, how that works. So what would happen is that uh decided that going through, if that call number was not the best way. The email on one board, the representatives from the five agencies, who put together a proposal, voted on it as a body of themselves. And present that proposal to the Lake County Board of Commissioners. Um, the commissioners could either approve approve that proposal, um, say no or say, hey, this is what we like, this is what we don't like. Um, and kind of send it back to the E nine one one board. Um, it's still the agreement is to keep it as a five-person board. Um, with the representatives coming from the agency we talked about before, and those are really the changes.
So I guess my question is, the E nine one one board, what is, what is their? What are their parameters for deciding on the division of of funding?
Um, so are you talking about the dispatch numbers and like the call numbers?
Yeah, well, what, uh, what will they base that decision that they present to to uh the county commissioners?
Sorry, I should have gone, I'm sorry.
So the main budget structure now is. That the E nine one one board reviews the three years of cat data or dispatch data. Looks at the lead agency and then divises it up by that for the annual payments into the E nine one one authority and into the independent communication center. What Claire was addressing was if the E nine one one board does not think that that is the best method forward. They need to come up with a proposal to the BOCC. Um, and the BOCC can, you know, approve, deny, or question that. And then that would trigger an amendment to the IGA, which then city councils and agencies will also approve.
So it'd have to be a change to the IGA at that point?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense. And then all the, all the government entities then would have to uh participate in that change.
Yeah.
All right, that's good to know. Um, I do another question, you know, we're talking about. We think this is a final version. If we voted this version, isn't it the final version? Doesn't everybody have to pass the same version we passed?
Uh, well, I mean, tech- technically not. If there are changes, we would, in neighbor's stance, changes, we would have to bring them back to you or revisit. So let's say, for example, uh, the council approved this version tonight. And, you know, they're subsequently, I'll just pick an easy one, subsequently, Saint Vincent and the county decided to make it. Add a citizen member to the board. We would need to bring that change back to you all to approve and reset.
Okay, um, that makes sense. Then it's not clear to me why we're, why we're doing a resolution before we know what the final product's gonna be.
Well, here's the problem is, you 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 have three, or you have multiple parties that would be in the same position. Well, we're not gonna decide until they decide. We're not gonna vote on it until they vote. We're not gonna vote on it until they vote. So somebody has to vote on it first and we we're, I mean, you know, there's been enough meetings with the different entities. We feel this is the final version. Um, the BOCC had a discussion on this today and didn't make any changes. So I I don't think that, I don't anticipate any changes coming.
What is our confidence level that this is the final version?
Uh, the Saint Vincent Hospital District Board of Directors is ready to move forward with this. It will be on their um main meeting. And they have no changes to it. They reviewed, their legal counsel reviewed it, the board reviewed it, uh, the B O C C is ready to approve, um.
Then that makes more sense, thank you. Shannon, please.
Hi, I was, um, I apologize if I missed this, but I I did read through. I had asked uh you to consider broadening the board of directors from the five paid employees to include a representative of the city. And perhaps of the county, and I'm wondering where that went with the other entities.
Sure, um, I'm happy to answer that. Let me discuss that, say, with the board of county commissioners. Uh, the board of county commissioners feels that the board is representative and does provide avenues for. Um, public feedback, uh, such as all the meetings for the E nine one one board will be open to the public and take public comment. Uh, the sheriff is an independently elected official, um, the O E M director uh reports to me. Uh, and then I report to the board of county commissioners. The fire chief and the police chief report to the city administrator and then ultimately to city council. And same with the EMS director reports to the CEO of Saint Vincent Hospital District, which then reports to that board. Uh, so the feeling was that there is um adequate ways for the public to participate and provide their feedback. And for the various elected boards to provide policy guidance to their executives and their representatives on the board.
Shannon, did you hear all that?
I did, I did hear all that. I disagree. Um, I disagree strongly that uh we need to have a a a public voice there. All of the people represented on that board are are professionals in their fields and uh. And and certainly respect that, but um having a public voice would be important.
Okay, thank you. Dana, yes, please.
Hi, this is uh maybe not entirely um relevant to the resolution itself. But how does the city currently pay for um for dispatch for nine one one?
That's a great question. Um, council member, you do not pay for it.
So looking over the way that this is worded, if um, let's say, i- it sounds like this would be. Broken up according to kind of the percentage of what uh from the city's standpoint of how much of nine one one. Calls go or uh kind of go to the city's services, so to speak, is, and we would get our 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 bill once a year. Based on that percentage, is that correct?
Correct.
So the the. Does that payment go into the salaries that are paid as well?
The great question. So the um, the payments from each entity go to cover, you know, the approximate or projected costs. Of the emergency communication center. So that will cover the director's salary and one dispatch salary, the way that it is, it is currently set up. Um, so it, you know, as the E nine one one board gets set, um, and, you know, uh. Is understand their chart and move forward with that. So so all the payments will go into essentially all the costs for the emergency communication center. Uh, so whether that's technology upgrade, uh, trainings, salaries, um. All of it.
So in the, in the papers that were submitted in our packet, um, there's a, an approximately a seven hundred thousand dollar. Um, total is, are we talking about that uh, the city percentage of that?
Correct.
So if I did a little math and I looked and said, oh, you know, like ten percent of the calls or twenty percent of the calls went through. To the Leadville Police Department. Um, you know, I I I come out with a a pretty stiff number, um, of over a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and I'm just, I guess I'm batting that question back to uh Lori and the mayor. Um, have we done some sort of cost analysis of what uh this might cost the city? And projected where those funds might come from?
Well, we would, we would definitely have to add it to the budget for twenty twenty-four. Uh, and it is not in the budget for twenty twenty-three because we have not been historically paying for it. Um, and I think that that what we worked with was to keep working with the county to figure out a a fair way to. Estimate what the cost is of of the service and, I mean, I, I think. County Manager Burman has been very diplomatic and nice about it. We've been getting free service up to this point. And in order for this service to exist and continue, um, you you know, we we've met with the county and the other partners to figure out a fair way for this. But we have not done like that. I I mean, we haven't, I I haven't asked the other cities what they pay. That's the cost comparison we're referencing.
I just thought it was, it it's sort of an interesting thought exercise since we've been tossing about figures for salaries and the like. That um, that this is no, I mean, I, obviously, we need the nine one one services. And the city, I think, definitely needed to be a partner in this. But it's, it it it's not a small cost for us to assume on a regular basis. That is all.
Correct, and and like many things that we've partnered with the 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 county is that uh in other entities is that that. It, we would not be able to do it for the same cost if we stood it up on our own. It would not be practical to stand it up on our own.
I should say concerns as Councilmember Grant, I fully vehemently disagree that uh that is enough. Participation from public, uh, more public is getting enough of a voice and to say, um, at the end of the day, they do not have an official vote. They can say all they want and they can come to all the meetings they can. We've certainly seen it happen in our own uh two systems. It doesn't mean that there's going to be change, adequate change for them. So I I fully agree that that's not wholly representative, um, and that they deserve a position as well.
Max, any thoughts?
Getting to my unmute button. Uh, the the only thought I have is, this is a a nine one one dispatch system and. And I think this is one time that I believe that we can leave it up to the professionals without having any additional uh public input. I mean, this is a, a pretty rote system for our, for our, for our community that uh. That I think we have enough oversight, so I'm gonna disagree with uh Councilmember Grant. And Councilmember Luna Lell in that regard, and in the way that it reads right now, uh, I'm fine with it. But that, that, those are just me, that's just me.
Yeah.
I would agree with those sentiments.
Which, I'm talking about Max.
Max's.
Okay.
Uh, Max's point, um, I would be fine with even it, um, to professionals and think that. Too much, I mean, I just think it can become troublesome when you start adding our larger members, so.
Okay.
I'm good with the way it is.
I I also agree with Max and Tim. Uh, I'm not sure Dana is on that particular topic. I think that uh Lake Professionals run a very professional organization uh that is not very controversial, quite frankly, uh, makes sense to me.
I agree with Max and Tim.
Thank you.
Commissioner? Can I just add, thanks, um, yeah, I'd just like to remind everyone um that this has lived under the sheriff. And the point of this is to pull it out from political sway. Um, and to broaden those partners and that contribution from all districts and all those who depend on it. Um, many of whom are under, as Tim uh mentioned, the management of the local governments, the city and the county. Um, in a very strong way, should be representing and making decisions based on your desires um and direction. Uh, but but again, this, this is, this is the very point of pulling this out. Um, and and sharing that responsibility across districts. Um, and uh, if we don't do this, it will remain Mary's house under one elected official. Who, who knows what capacity and and um, you know, uh, can hold in any given election. So to 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 save it from that kind of volatility, um, this is that best effort.
Okay, thank you very much. Any final thoughts on this resolution?
Uh, I can speak for myself. I certainly agree with that and I think that's why it's important stuff, doing it right the first time and not having to circle back to it later on when. Or ever, if ever, hopefully it never comes to that, but if there's ever a time where the community feels strongly that. That was the wrong decision to make, not to pull it out, but rather not include community input from it. Um, so by all means, I fully agree with the premise of it. I just think we need to go a little bit further, not necessarily that. Um, that is, this is the wrong way or this isn't the way we should do it.
Okay, thank you. Any other last thoughts? Thank you. Then at this time, I would initiate a motion on resolution number nine, series of twenty twenty-three.
Bill moves to Dr. Mission Nine, says, according to the bridge, resolution approving the second amended and restated Lake County nine one one. Intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement and bylaws. The Lake County Emergency Telephone Service Authority.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Fergency seconds. For Gency seconds.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grant?
If you said Grant, the answer is no.
Okay. Mayor Levy?
Yes.
And councilmember Luna Lell?
No.
And Mayor President Crane?
Yes.
And councilmember for Gency?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
And councilmember Berks and Adada.
Uh, thank you. On a vote of sixty-four, this resolution has passed. I uh I really do respect. I I I I find the the uh um the objections to this uh reasonable, uh, but this is where we are now. So thank you very much.
I'm under the test.
And and thank you to the county and to their office of emergency management. I know a lot of hard work has gone into this. I really do appreciate the fact that we've been talking for years that it shouldn't be in the sheriff's office. And finally, we're doing something about it. The second thing is, I've never understood why the city wasn't involved in the nine one one system. So uh this rectifies that to some extent. But to to uh council member Green's point, it's a lot of money.
You want him to move out of the closet?
Ah, ah, wow.
It is a closet, so tiny. Okay, at this time, we have the public meetings planner. Is anything anybody would like to uh discuss on the public meetings planner?
I'd just uh reiterate that I will not be able to attend the work session. This is science on the night.
Okay.
I'll have a written um point of view on that, which I would like to be read into the.
Thank you.
Uh, this is Dana. I also want to remind you that I will not be able to attend that Tuesday um for the work session.
Okay, thank you.
Should we double check the rest of the folks?
Well, um, uh.
I'm good.
Here.
I could certainly be be here. Um, Max, how's the night look for you?
I'm looking at my schedule right now. Stand by.
Works for me.
Well, he's looking. Shannon, how's the night look for you?
I'm available.
Thank you. Um, that gives us four, and we don't know about Tracy. Um. What do you think, uh, Lori? Do you think it's it's worth the conversation at four city council members?
Uh, I will be appearing remotely for it. Uh, if everyone signs that, I do know we could do a work session on the May twenty third, if that, if people feel like they want to be present in person and they would rather have it on the twenty third.
Okay, let's ask uh round table who, let me ask it this way, who cannot be available on the twenty third? Ken, how are you feeling about Twitter?
I'm good with that. And the only concern I have is that you put out a pretty strong message to business owners to about them.
Yeah, that's fair. That's a fair point.
I would like to keep it the night as well.
Okay, that's a good point. Thank you.
You're right.
Uh, we're going to stick with the night, but that's good everybody. Um. And I don't know how far we're to get along the the decision pathway on that, but uh it's really an important conversation.
Well, and and I think Councilmember Hill brings up a really good point. And part of that that discussion is tearing from the business owners.
Yeah. Let's hope they show up. I hope they do.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on the meeting planner? We do have a lower board meeting this Thursday at six o'clock. Okay, if we don't have any thoughts or changes, uh, we'll move on. Uh, mayor's report, I'll try and keep it brief. Um. Um, the 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 celebration of the wheelers, the fundraiser was fabulous overnight. Um, for those of you who got to attend, it was a great event. Uh, for those of you who didn't get to attend, it was a great event. So um, uh, we had the the showing, the tree showing of the film uh for that Rocky Mountain P B S produced last Wednesday. Um, very interesting film, and it was a nice gathering at the old church. Uh, for those of you who would like to look at that film, it's called The Lost Irish Miners of Leadville, and it's on uh YouTube. Uh, do the Rocky Mountain P B S banner. Um. A quick note, I've been really pursuing a a solar solution on streetlights. And I've had several people try to do this, and a guy got back to me the other day and he said the technology's not there, it is way, way too expensive still. So that's unfortunate. I was hoping for a solar solution on Main Street, but we're not there. Um, I attended the City Summit of the Americas last week. Uh, that was uh, first of all, it was an honor to do that. They had like two hundred fifty mayors from North and South America uh there and in ours, in our seminars on Tuesday at the Colin School of Mines. Uh, we focused mostly on mining issues of various sorts. And I learned a couple of things very interesting. One is, we had a really positive story to tell about the city of Leadville and Climax Mine and and the relationship uh that we have with the mine. I can tell you that is nothing even close to universally true throughout the Americas. Uh, it was really um very informative to hear some some of the mayors from South America. Uh, from Ecuador, Peru, Brazil, um, Argentina, and uh it's a real struggle in those countries. Um, also, we learned that there are seven hundred thousand legacy mines in the United States, legacy mines being mean, mines that are no longer active, but they have piles. And so there's a big push by the federal government and the U U S Geological Service to figure out how do we clean up those piles? And uh and and we have lots and lots of piles to to offer. Uh, but I don't know what the future is there. I think they're still trying to figure it out. But it was very interesting that there's a lot of um a lot of impetus towards finding out ways to clean up piles across the United States, millions of them. Um, so the last thing I would say is the Sound of Music is next week. On Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I hope people will 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 take the time uh to attend. What is produced by this high school is nothing short of miraculous, always entertaining. So I'm looking forward to it. Any council reports?
Yes. Um, so as you heard earlier, I will be leaving Chiving Housing Trust. Um. You know, my current living situation, unfortunately, my parents will be moving away next year. So I have to financially prepare to uh try to bear this community's cost of living without their support, which will be very fun. And I am not sure if I'll make it, but here we are. Um, that being said, it means I obviously have to take on a more traditional full-time job uh for better or worse, working in a safe way. So if you ever see me around, say hi. Um. Uh, which is fine, but it has come at the cost, obviously, of dropping a lot of things that I'm involved in. I want to clear up some things that I will not be dropping, some things that I have dropped. I will not be dropping any responsibilities uh related to the Leville County Regional Housing Authority. And I wish to remain sitting as president and I'm committed to making sure uh that above anything else, I will uh put my full support in as much as possible, of course. Um, Housing Coalition, uh, the large uh, and I still plan to attend, but those are the two only real major things that I feel comfortable keeping on. I will be dropping the homelessness subcommittee. I will be dropping the food access coalition and be dropping these that is lefty next. I'll be dropping bosses in Leadville. I would be dropping the school equity meetings, um, residents for responsible development. And there are a few others I'm sure I'm forgetting, but um, there's a lot of gaps. Um, one of the great things that I got from that is to hear from industry experts and to hear from people with lived experience, which swayed my vote one way or another. And that that was invaluable to me to be able to make decisions that are actually based off of uh something. Um, not to say that you guys don't, but just for me personally, um, I do need that input to feel comfortable making decisions that I do. So I will be trying my best to keep those uh close to me and if not, trying to get them to come to us. So that uh I imagine we all could uh would love to have more participation in our events. Um, regardless if there is something on uh our agenda for them or not, to at the very least, let us know what their concerns are. Um, reason I say this is one, I know that we want to keep tabs on who's attending what. Um, so imagine it would be valuable to, you know, kind of make those um drops known, uh, where we will not be having, well, I'm sure some of them we will, as a mayor attends a fair amount of them. Uh, at least from the bag meetings, but there would certainly be some that there is no city representation, maybe someone else can pick up those. Um, the those meetings, if not, I mean, hopefully we could just get them to come here and voice their concerns a little bit more uh openly, which uh at the end of the day, I think would be valuable regardless of whether to stay or not. Um, so just kind of wanted to give everyone the heads up of that's kind of what's going on. And unfortunately, I don't think that I would be able to report on as much as I normally am and be able to keep in touch with the community as much as we normally are. Uh, I know that we've already made the decision to raise the pay for the next set of uh coun- council, it's just city council members. So I'm glad that that has been made and or at least will be hopefully made. And I think that that is a good first step to kind of get council a little bit more liberty to take on some of these groups, hopefully. Um, but as it currently stands, financially speaking, if I want to be realistic and continue filling the walls that I am currently filling and um learning more about housing as I was uh I worked in housing heavily with Full Circle and took it on at a policy level. I have a deep understanding of it and know what issues need to be solved. If I want to continue to, you know, have those if I want to continue presenting those and bringing my voice to them, then obviously I have to make these changes to make that possible. So it was an easy decision. It sucks. Uh, obviously, Chiving Housing Trust is going to be looking for someone else to promote um their homes that they're trying to sell to our community. And it sucks that I, uh, you know, had been a great opportunity as part of all these coalitions to connect a lot of our valued community members to this, these opportunities, but it is what it is. Um, and I hope that we see this as an opportunity to kind of reflect on what is needed in our community to be a little bit more tight knit and to really draw votes and draw conclusions from those industry experts and from those lived experience people.
Thank you, Christian. It's amazing how much you've done.
I hope to continue doing more despite my limited capacity.
Sure. Any other city council reports? Uh, seeing none at this time, we would ask if anybody in the public would like to speak to city council on items, on any items, rightfully, please.
Our police chief has evidenced that an experiment in tyranny exists in our community. United States Supreme Court justice Thomas evidences that refusing to acknowledge conflicts of interest is a part of corruption in our government. That such dark eclipse of public duty exists in our local city and county government is well exhibited by the advantages I gave at the last city council meeting. Um. But I have a minute to go on. Um, I became closely involved in what was happening when my truck and trailer got seized by the city while uh another business that was nearby had multiple vehicles on the street stored for there for years. Um. I went to a, I noticed the comprehensive plan was being formed. Uh, I noticed something disturbing in the one that the uh P M Z put forth, um, which was actually done by an outside agency, mainly. And um they talk about making government more efficient as a goal. And then uh that goal was uh watered down to where you couldn't discern what it was saying in in the one that was published by the city council. Um. At that point, I determined that we were heading towards a single horn government. Um, at one point, um, I was at uh one of those COVID meetings here. And I noticed a book in Mayor Lape's office that said combining uh city and county governments. It was a red or brown uh art back. Um, to combine the governments like that empowers uh developers by only having a few people to go to for approval of their um things. Uh, one of the example is in in residency was the approval of the uh real yard to A C dot. I can't remember if it was four hundred K or eight hundred K uh toward the the city council. So that sounds okay with us. And um toward that to the the real yard, which didn't benefit our community at all. Um, it benefited uh realtors um making uh more money on uh uh accelerating gentrification. Um, I would be uh very interested in seeing the uh mayor's salary reduced to twenty four K in being a strong mayor and uh being a full-time physician. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Precious. Anybody else in council chambers or on Zoom who would like to speak to city council? Uh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Tim. I was about to adjourn. Table all the way up.
Yeah, oh, okay. I'm super convinced it was the county manager. Uh, just wanted to pass on some updates from the board of county commissioners. Uh, so today they passed a resolution to join the real job starts zone, uh, the economic development initiative uh through O E D. Uh, so the city also has the opportunity to join that if they they wish. Um. I am happy to announce that the community justice coordinator position for the county has been filled. Angel Luhanda Gutierrez is um filling that position. So he will lead the community justice reform work in the um in the county. So um, we can do formal invitations to you guys. Or um, I think most all of you know Angel, so you can uh find time to meet with him and provide your perspectives on community justice reform. Um, one other thing, oh, congratulations to Claire for graduating from the academy.
Is that a good thing?
Yes.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody else who would like to speak to city council? I hear you know at eight thirty-four, uh, the city council's adjourned. Thank you all.